Good evening, welcome to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees September 25th, 2019 meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, we have a quorum this evening. All board members are present. I do want to note that some of our administrative staff is out of state working on a college-related issue and they weren't able to join us tonight, but we do have two vice presidents joining us. Have you had an opportunity to review the minutes and if so, any changes or we accept them as written? No. Alright, we'll accept the minutes as written. I do need a motion on our next agenda item. Do I have a motion? We were going to move this down the agenda.
I'd like to move that we move the public comment portion down to the new business, the first item under new business.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Housed? Motion carries. And the reason for moving the public comment is we're going to have it match the agenda item. So that brings us to our next agenda item, celebrating success, British murder mystery trip to Europe, Molly Mashad, Erin Cloyde. Welcome.
And company, we brought students with us tonight as well. Thank you so much for inviting us back to speak about this opportunity that we offer our students every year. You might remember from last year that this is our FLAN 207 course. It's our cultural awareness course here at NIC. And we teach this course through a couple different lenses. We look at how can we learn culture best? And the way that we look at this is that we can learn culture certainly through the texts that we read. You might recall that this is a British murder mystery class, so we read everything from Sherlock Holmes to Agatha Christie to something current today as well. And we also look at that as that texts can only take us so far. And so the other part of that class that's important for us is that we also travel. And this is where many of you wanted to go with us last year as we departed in May. But this last year, we decided to stay with England rather than switching to Ireland. And so we stayed with the same novels that we chose last year, we stayed with the same trip, partially because a lot went right in last year's trip and last year's class. But we also wanted to tweak a few things. So we added an entirely additional day during the week where we could meet with the students and so we could talk about British culture, we could talk about the novels that inform our lens of British culture, but also prepare us for the trip. This last year, we spent two weeks overseas. And tonight, we brought students with us to be able to speak to their experience in the course and what we changed, what we modified and what went well during this class. So tonight, we have with us Holly and Rebecca and Brittany and Claudia. And each of them will speak to a different part of the class and a different part of the experience.
Hi. Oh, that's really high. I'm short, sorry. So, I'm Rebecca and I'm going to talk to you guys about the in-class preparation we did, keeping in context what we were learning in the texts and like what we were supposed to execute once we did get to the portion where we were traveling in this course. So, physical packing and preparation for this course was something we really focused on from the interviews to get into the class to the actual process of being in the class. And that was with the great effort of Molly over here. She had put together a basically do's and don'ts of like what to wear, what not to wear, how to stand out as an American and how not to stand out as an American, because we were walking into a culture that was not our own and we didn't want to be one-targeted and we also just didn't want to make our trip harder by having to stand out. So, we had a very strict packing list and then we even executed that by taking our fully packed bags to a class like halfway through the semester and then we had to walk around downtown Coeur d'Alene at a speedwalking state like we were going to miss a train. And like, I don't know how long that walk was, but it was supposed to be a few miles. So we did that one day in class as a group exercise. And then we were also given outlines as to things that we were actually not allowed to bring with us. So, we had like, I think we weren't allowed to bring fanny packs, we weren't allowed to bring college logo wear because it made us stand out as students, which could make us potential targets for crime later in the trip. So that was very strict criteria for that. Emotional care, we actually had a professor, Laura Templeman came in and she talked to us about the benefits and importance of meditation. And she gave us a very cool set of tools, both in the form of apps and just personal advice as to how to maintain positive mental health and take care of yourself while you are in this foreign country and you don't actually have the tools that you have back home to help take care of yourself mentally. We also got advice from previous students who had gone on the trip last year and they shared with us struggles that they had emotionally and mentally, just exhaustion-wise, so that we would know how to avoid problems that they could have avoided had they had had advice as well. And then as far as physical prep, you'll hear more about this later, so I'll just skim over it really fast. We had suggested 15,000 steps a day to log either on our phones or on any other electronic devices that we had at our disposal, just because we did do a lot of walking on this tour and like I said, you'll hear more about that later. We had a PE teacher from NIC come in and teach us some ways to take care of ourselves physically while we were on the very long flight over so that we could make sure that we weren't aching and in pain when we got off. We were given great advice from both Molly and Erin about having like a very positive and healthy physical state when we left so that we wouldn't be suffering on those trips, so we had to stay in shape. We had very strict journaling exercises in the class, both on the material we were reading, the settings in the books that we were reading, as well as the places that we would be going. And we had to research the history maps, we had to know our way around, we had to find places that we were going to go, places we wanted to go, and trace back the history and how they connected to the texts and what we wanted to learn while we were over there. And those were due, I think, in increments of like three deadlines over the semester. So that helped us on our way over there. But yeah, now I'll turn it over to Brittany.
Hello. Okay, so we did team bonding during the whole course of the class. One of the things that we were warned about when we were interviewing for this class, because it does take an interview in order to get in, the instructors would like to know that you are capable of handling such an exercise such as this. So, they informed us that for the two weeks that we were going to be over there, we were going to be in each other's business the whole time. So, each other's back pockets, kind of, you know, not a lot of alone time, because some people require that in order to recharge themselves. So we had to, we really had to figure out how to grow with each other, how to like each other, essentially become a family and just communicate with one another. So the first thing we did was we set up boundaries. One of the first sessions in the classroom was we came up with like a list of rules of if somebody's hanging back in the group, it's not a matter of you should be concerned about it, let them just kind of hang back, let them kind of get that alone time they require. Another one was headphones, we learned about, like I said, the meditation and all sorts of stuff that we learned how to just kind of recharge ourselves. I was in a room in London with four other women, we shared a hotel room, so no alone time whatsoever. And it was super fun, everyone was just amazing with that and it was all because we prepared ahead of time during the class session. Let's see here, another thing we did was team building exercises. So in the photo you see, we blindfolded each other. We had partners for our tours, so we were partnered up with our partners and we blindfolded each other and one had to lead the other around campus for certain clues and that allowed you to trust your partner because you're going to be in a foreign country with the other person and you have to give a tour, which I'll go over later. The other thing we did was we prepared for the meltdown day, which is about the third day of that trip and that's where the jet lag just catches up with you. And let me tell you, man, I threw a fit over not getting my orange juice, man. It was quite a time. So, it was meltdown day for sure. And honestly, when we came back, we all wanted to do it all over again with each other. We still keep in touch and everything. So some of these pictures, the picture is from the backpacking day that Rebecca talked about where we, you know, cruised along and around and that was part of team building. Rebecca led the yoga group, actually. She's almost a certified yoga instructor, so that was really amazing. So everybody kind of got to regroup a little bit. And one of the bottom photos there, Molly and Erin are taking us through a group bonding exercise where it's practically like don't touch the lava, essentially. So there was lots of communication around that, lots of sticking together and it was just really great. And in the end, we all just, you know, learned how to get along with one another and established great communication skills. And then finally, preparing tours, the tour was the final project. It was something, you had three hours to give a tour in whatever country you were assigned to. So for me, it was Edinburgh, Scotland. And I was, you know, I had maps prepared, I had, you know, entire like destinations plotted out, all having to do with the books we read, the culture it had to do with. So we might take you somewhere and we say, this is a really cool building, what does this have to do with, you know, the books? This is how it has to do with it. The other thing is we were led on other tours, like we were given an Ian Rankin tour by a guy who has read pretty much all the books and he just brought us all around Edinburgh, like talking about Ian Rankin and the different buildings where he sets up his characters. It was really fun to get to go and witness that. And the main thing about it is it was a huge confidence booster. You go to London and you're there with millions of people who have families and jobs to get to and you are in their way. So you need to, you know, learn how to move with the crowd and that took some confidence. And I can definitely say that that helped me a lot, for sure. Like later on, after we got back, I just knew how to self-advocate for myself and understand my own personal awareness. So, that was also a part of the tours was we kind of had to make sure everybody stayed together, make sure we were all self-aware of ourselves because the culture, everybody's got their own stuff that they're doing. They don't care that you're here visiting, kind of thing. So one of the main things was we walked our tour before we gave it. That was something that Molly and Erin gave us to do and it was very helpful. And the main part was we just had to make sure we brought it back to the classroom. So one of them was we went on a murder mile tour. He is a guy who leads a podcast over in London, was super amazing. He took us for, I think it was two or three hours. It was really wonderful. The bottom picture where we're all grouped together and bowing, Holly took us on an amazing tour through the Chester Coliseum. Amazing, just absolutely beautiful, once-in-a-lifetime destination to go visit. And everybody was super emotional, just you can feel the history there. And other times, we got to ride the tubes and we just got to experience what it was like for everybody in a day-to-day life in London and Edinburgh and Chester and Wales. It was amazing. And I will turn it over to Holly.
Good evening. So, all of the prepping that you've heard of so far, the physical and mental, really paid off when the very first day that we stepped off the plane, we actually clocked an average of 21,000 steps. The numbers that you see, so 182,521, a total of 91 and almost 91 and a half miles was the total steps that we got throughout the entire trip for the two weeks. Every day was an average of, or from anywhere between 18,000 and 40,000 steps. So everything from walking with all of our gear downtown Coeur d'Alene, walking with our partners around, we obviously really geared up to be super active while we were there. And then the picture on the side is actually all of us inside of the Edinburgh University right after, this was our very first tour that we went on. They are not with us today, but we actually got to stay inside of this classroom, it's a real classroom that was taught in and they did live with the, yeah, they had the cadavers in there and they did them like live and all the people would like learn about it, like I don't know, it was crazy to see and like be where that was happening. And then they told us about how students would get bored with the lecture and throw peanuts at their instructor. And so that was interesting. So these are just a few of the examples from some of the tours that we did. The top left and the top right-hand corners are actually the before and after from when we left Seattle Airport to when we landed in London. Then we did, like I said, a lot of walking. Those are pictures from almost everywhere that we went. The bottom left-hand corner, I don't know if everybody's looking, but that was right along the Menai Strait, that was a super awesome walk also. And then, yeah, so it was really great to be able to see all of the different types of educational institutions while we were over there and get to just walk in the footsteps of a lot of other amazing people. Thank you.
I'm Claudia. So, I am a community member, I am not a member or a student at NIC, but I heard about the trip from one of your associate professors and so I hopped on board and asked if I could audit it. I have a degree in English, so it fit right in with what I like to do. So I got to do the fun things. I still did the journaling, I still did the reading, but I got to just enjoy and not worry about a grade. It was great. So, I took the pictures that are on the wall and on the left-hand side, the upper part is part of the culture. That was one of the things that was important for the class. And so, we went and saw The Mousetrap and it's the longest-running play in history. And it was the 67th year there and it's the same original theater. And we had front row seats. And their British accents were great. I just couldn't believe how well they spoke English. And the other thing about The Mousetrap is that you have to swear, if you've not ever seen it, when you finish the play, you have to swear that you will never tell who the murderer is. And so they did it there too and so I can't tell you. And then next to that is Agatha Christie's memorial and that's Kat, who is your professor. And she loves Agatha Christie, so we had to see that. And then, we rode the tubes. I was, the book that I had to read was for King Solomon's Carpet and it was the subway story. And I knew more about the London subway before I even put my feet down in England. And I still have memories. I mean, I could take you there today and guide you. So Erin and Molly did a great job of making us focus on what we needed to do. And on the far right, we did the Monument Tower, which in 1666, London burned. And Christopher Wren was one of the architects that helped rebuild. And so we had to have this tower that is 220 feet tall, which is the distance from the tower to St. Paul's Cathedral. There's 311 steps and we walked all the way up and you could walk completely around and look at London. And what a difference. It has, it's such a cosmopolitan city and it has wonderful architecture from the Roman walls to the Shard, which is just a beautiful, modern piece of architecture. Then we had a group picture at Piccadilly and then the 42,000 steps was, that's a watch to show how many we'd walked that day. The red telephone box is symbol of London and they wanted to take it down and people were so upset that they left them. And they're now storage facilities, you don't find phones. But, and that's a student and I gave him an orange because he looked like a homeless person. And then on the far right, although there are students there, my intention was to take a picture of that fellow because his hairstyle was just unbelievable. And he was so goth, I mean, it was just, it was fun. And culture. So one of the things that we did, there's the empty amphitheater and that was built back in the 1700s and there's graffiti from that era. So when students got bored, they just drew their things on the wood. And then the center, upper center is a sculpture that's all out of books. And then Lloyd and Kat and what's his name? Tyler, thank you. Sorry, he was kind of the Willow Boisht kid. They did Arthur's Seat. And Arthur's Seat's an extinct volcano in Edinburgh. And while we were there, Kat and I participated in the Edinburgh Marathon Festival. She did the 10K and I did the 5K. And she didn't get the piper. When I ran, there was a fellow wearing a kilt and he played the pipes the entire 5K. It was fun. And then we went to Brighton, so the bottom picture with me looking like I'm seeing a ghost. And the one with the faces was Brighton, so we put our feet in the English Channel. So we got culture, it was fun to see the things that people were doing. We rode the train all by ourselves. We didn't have anybody else helping us and we survived. The Roman Wall is next to the sign that, for the underground, so we saw Hadrian's Wall and we read about it in class. And the far left is Edinburgh. And then, one of my goals, because my book, The Police Officers, you know, in America, they eat donuts and in Scotland or in England, they do sausage rolls. And so, my goal was to try to find the foods that they were eating in the books, so I did accomplish having a sausage roll and a special cookie and lots of tea. And so it was quite an accomplishment. And I thank you for allowing them to have a class like this because it's important to be able to see the things that you're reading about and it just gives you the opportunity to experience other cultures. Thank you.
Thank you. So we dominated last time, we wanted our students to have their voices heard. With that, we are planning on Ireland next, this coming spring, in fact. We've got our texts all lined up. We have the coach hired and reserved, so Erin and I will be working diligently from now until then to finalize all those details. There's a lot of details. But if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Molly. Board, any questions on the presentation? Trustee Howard?
Last, a question and a comment. Every time I hear one of these presentations, I want to go.
You're, we told you last time, Ken, you were more than welcome, but you have to walk.
Well, there's the deal killer.
Reminder on some of the book titles?
Okay, so last year, the book titles are King Solomon's Carpet by Barbara Fine, Complicit by Gillian Hammer, and even Dogs in the Wild by Ian Rankin. Those covered London, Wales and Edinburgh respectively.
Molly, we all want to be students again every year when you present on this topic. I mean, it's wonderful. If you could just remind us, the students had to pay their travel.
There is a fee, it's $32.50 and that covers round-trip airfare, hotels, in-country transportation, breakfast every day and several group dinners. So really, they're just tasked with lunches and occasional dinners and then incidentals and spending money.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like a lot of fun. And are all of you going to try to go to Ireland?
I have to.
President McLennan?
So I had a lot of fun debriefing last year with Erin and Molly. And I chuckled this year as you were preparing and maybe from a student perspective, one of the stories that I heard was that you, you had to pack as though you were going on the trip and then go on a walk.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, did your packing change after you went on that walk?
Absolutely.
Did it change a lot?
Yes.
It's one thing to talk about carrying your things around, but when we, you know, we took them all the way downtown and back to campus again and they were, you know, humping their stuff, they, it helped edit.
Thank you for a great presentation. We're glad you had a lot of fun and you learned a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our constituent reports and first up is Asnik, Paul McLeod.
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board, President McLennan, members of the audience. I remember last year, I was in Erin Cloyde's class and he was talking about this trip and now I am really regretting not going because it sounds like it was a lot of fun. I am so happy because yesterday, we had our very first board meeting with Asnik and it was a huge success. We welcomed three new senators. Those senators' names are Justine Lackner, Hayden Blanks and Kenny Geddy. We held a short inauguration ceremony. Unfortunately, we lost two senators. We gained three, we lost two due to academic reasons, they had to focus on school. So, in a couple of weeks, we're going to open that search up again and we're going to hire a couple more senators to fill those spots. Asnik also created two ad hoc committees. The first, I will be leading, which will be going over our constitution, bringing it up to date. We're also going to be including some language to make Abbies, our dual-enrolled representative position, more official. And we also created an ad hoc committee that will be focusing on creating a student government handbook. This is really focused to make the structure of becoming a senator a lot, well, a lot more structured, really make that process a lot smoother. Currently, it's a little, it's a little bumpy, so we're just streamlining that process a little bit. Many of the senators have already gotten underway on their projects and I'm super excited about the work that's been going on so far. We have one senator who's working on creating a newsletter for students. It's gonna, he's looking at making it go out twice a month. It's going to include information like upcoming events, it's going to include helpful information for students, really just getting information to students and it's going to be a lot more frequent than something like the Sentinel. So we're really excited about that. We also have another senator who's working on another project that is a mentoring program where students who have been in college a little bit longer can volunteer to help out new students. And we really think this is going to be absolutely incredible for retention. It's shown that, that students who don't get involved and don't make those connections early on don't often succeed, so we're really trying to bridge that gap there. Asnik also went on its training retreat just a couple weeks ago and it was an incredible time. It was such a great learning opportunity. We had all kinds of activities that really developed a lot of bonding. And then lastly, this Saturday, we have our Day of Service. It starts at 9:00 AM, you can, you can sign up on Cardinal Life. It's a fantastic opportunity, it's so much fun and it's a great way to help the community. So thank you all very much for having me. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Paul. Great report. Board, do you have questions of Paul?
One question.
Trustee Bandici.
Paul, for the Day of Service, what do you guys have planned for that? Can you give us just a hint on that, a glimpse?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be, we'll be planting some trees right here in our community. Yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for Paul? Well, you sound enthused about the start of school. That's good.
Oh yeah, it's a lot of fun. It's great.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Tom Green.
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board, thank you for having me. We had a very informative staff assembly meeting on September 12th. Chief Information Officer for IT, Ken Wardinsky, came and gave us an overview of some of the recent improvements and updates. IT has made to several platforms, we use on a daily basis. Many of the changes streamline current functions and make them more efficient, such as changes to the MyNIC portal that allow users to personalize their pages, important links at the top of the page. An updated, cleaner, simplified helpdesk, ticket portal and an ideas feature that basically is an online idea box. It allows for upvotes and comments and two-way communication. It's all kind of inside-baseball stuff, but for us, it's very welcome and very appreciated. Ken also reviewed Box, which is the college's new cloud content management and file sharing service. I personally use Box quite a lot, it's helped me tremendously. It empowers users to share large files, both internally and externally, without having to go through the IT helpdesk. I take a lot of photos as part of my job and it lets me, instead of burning them to a disk and sending them through the mail or some other outdated way of sharing information, I can just share folks both publicly and internally a link and it's wonderful. In addition to Ken, we heard from Laura Rumppler, who's the Chief Communications Government Relations Officer. Laura gave a great presentation on how we in the community, staff, faculty, students, are all ambassadors for NIC. For those of us who wear our t-shirts and our clothing around town or might work a booth at a county fair or wherever, we're often approached by folks who wanted to either ask us a question about the college, talk about their experience, to talk about the experience their family member might have had. Not everyone's used to this kind of interaction, so Laura was asked to come give us some guidance to staff assembly, it's come up a few times. She provided- She provided a ton of good information, some helpful hints, and some tools we can use for some of us who, if this experience is, is not in our wheelhouse. She reminded us just to speak to your own comfort level, and to be ready to point folks in the right direction to find more information, to try and stay as informed as possible, of course, but if you don't know the answer, don't guess. At the end of the day, she reminded us that most people are just looking for a connection, want to talk, or even vet. And so, not every situation calls for a response, which is something I learned from my wife a long time ago, and it's been invaluable. That's it. That's my report. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Board, any questions on his report? Very good. Thank you.
So true.
Faculty Assembly, Chris, Pete Chat, did I get?
Pell Chat.
Pell Chat. I don't know why I don't say that right, but I will, next time.
I'm sure it's fancier, but that's how we say it. Chair Wood, fellow members of the board, everyone else gathered here today. This is the report of the faculty assembly. At a September meeting, we opened with a Senate report, which included the need to elect a new faculty member to the Senate. Somebody had stepped down. We had several folks interested in that, and we didn't prepare ourselves that day to have a vote of multiple people, and so we decided to move that vote to online, and that's going to close this Friday. So we're hoping that'll help the Senate fill itself up. I provided the chair report, and I just covered information that I had from attending meetings over the month, and what information was shared at those meetings. We spent some time discussing policy and procedure 5.16, which handles student complaints and concerns. It was published in the latter part of April, and there were some faculty that hadn't seen it, and it wasn't, it's not quite clear if it's relevant to classroom behaviors, or is it outside of the classroom? And that opened up some discussion, so we decided to encourage everybody to do a thorough read over this month, and we're going to bring it up again in the October meeting to, to get some clarity on that particular policy and procedure. Under new business, we had several faculty stand up and provide us some information on the Diversity Symposium, as well as the Humanities Conference, that are going to be coming in the, in the upcoming months, so we're well informed on that. We had a guest appearance by Dr. Burns. She walked the faculty through the SENS, the SENSIE survey, which is conducted, was conducted in classrooms this fall. For those of you that might not know what that survey is, it asks faculty to basically donate an entire class session for the students to take this survey, to, to provide the college some information about why they're here at NIC, and a bunch of other demographic information. But it wasn't quite clear from faculty, like, what's the value of taking a whole class session to get this information, and what's happening with that? And so, Dr. Burns explained why the data, why the data is collected, and she presented a hope for how that data is going to be used here at NIC in the future. That seemed to clear a bunch of questions up for the faculty. We ended with comments for the Good of the Order, and we did have one person step up and provide us a little bit more information about what the SENSIE survey has capabilities for as far as research. This particular faculty member did their dissertation around the SENSIE survey, and provided some additional clarity from a faculty's perspective of the value of that particular instrument. So that was very nice. We concluded our meeting at that point, and everyone on, everyone went on their merry way. And over the next couple of days, I did have some faculty bring to me something that I wanted to provide to you all as the board. I wanted to take a moment to address a letter to the editor that was published in the CDA Press on September 13th of this month. And in that letter, it states that there was a vote of no confidence that was put forward by the faculty and the staff here at NIC. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that that is untrue, and no vote has been put forward or discussed at, at any of our assemblies. So just wanted to clear up that piece of information. Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Chris, board, any questions for Chris? No, thank you for your report. Senate, Ben Tishida.
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 Chris and I get you every month. Yeah. Chair Wood, members of the board, thank you for having, having me here to talk about the Senate. The Senate has met twice since the last Board of Trustees meeting. Again, we're doubling up in anticipation of policies coming through for accreditation. The first thing we did was discussed open positions. We did have, as Chris mentioned, one faculty alternate position that was open, so I mentioned that to the senators. And then, we also have two student positions that are open. I've talked with Paul. It sounds like we've got two students coming in. We do have one who has been currently attending, and then we'll have two more showing up, hopefully, for the rest of the year. We moved on to policies. So in the meetings, both meetings, we discussed the copyright policy and procedure. That one had initially been passed by the Senate last spring, and was forwarded on to the President and President's Cabinet. They had some comments, and the legal counsel as well had comments, so they sent that back to us with those comments, and so we made some revisions based on those. Those revisions were based on a few procedural notes about who had certain responsibilities, the library's role as far as maintaining resources, but not being responsible for enforcing things, so some minor things related to responsibilities there. We did get those approved. We approved and voted on that policy and procedure. Those have been now forwarded on to the President for consideration. The other policy and procedure that we looked at was the Electronic Information Technology Accessibility Policy and Procedure. It's an acronym of EITA. We have looked at that one twice, and tabled it twice. There's been some discussion related to some terminology in there, and we had some good discussion around, there's a term called, sorry, universal design, which is a framework around information technology, making it accessible. And so, we had discussions about what that is, and how we want to go about putting that into a policy. It was decided to go ahead and remove it from this particular policy, and recommend to the committee that brought that policy and procedure to actually put forward a new policy just specifically about universal design, if that's their desire to do so. So we still have not finished that one. We still have more editing to do before we get to a full vote, but we will be meeting tomorrow, and that is our agenda item, our main agenda item for tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Board, any questions of Ben?
Thank you.
Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Takes us on to the President's report. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you. Last evening, we held, well, the NIC Foundation held an event at Anthony's Restaurant Homeport, and we had about a hundred and forty-some community members show up to support North Idaho College, and more importantly, to support our students with scholarship money. And it was a wonderful evening, and I, I bring that up here, both thank the board for the board members who were able to join us last night, but also to publicly acknowledge the generous support of Anthony's. You know, they do this in every community they operate. They adopted North Idaho College three years ago. This is the third annual event. All of the proceeds that, that we, all the ticket proceeds come back to the college. Anthony's generously donates all the food, beverage, waitstaff, chefs, and folks from other, staff from other restaurants to put on the event. And of course, it was a lovely evening, but mostly, I just want to publicly thank Anthony's and its leadership for their support of North Idaho College. On September 10th, we held the ribbon cutting for the Bob and Leona DiArmond College and University Center. And this is the facility that we cooperate with the University of Idaho and Lewis Clark State College. Very well-attended event, and I think what, what is really nice about that facility and about the ribbon cutting event itself was the, the way we're able to demonstrate in a very physical way the spirit of collaboration between our institutions and providing higher education opportunities to North Idaho. We have completed the refresh of Boswell Hall, which included a complete replacement of the HVAC, and a refresh of, well, replacement of every seat in Schuler Auditorium. And we were able to showcase that on September 14th with a sold-out event, Garrison Keeler and the Courtland Symphony, and nobody complained about the seats. So it was a very, very, very fun event. Lastly, I just want to note that we received a letter, as did all state agencies from the governor's office, requiring all state-supported institutions, including public colleges and universities, to hold and reserve five percent of this year's budget allocation. And so, for us, that will amount to about $600,000 of our state allocation, about $300,000 or so dollars for our CTE allocation. They haven't taken the money back, but it's possible that that will happen. What's, what's really, and there's some concern there, obviously, that's, that's a, that's a pretty good bit of money, but while that is concerning, it, in a way, it's giving us a very early preview of what the governor's thinking going into next year's budget process. We already know that we are not going to be able to submit line items this time around, and there's a long-term interest in expressing that letter as well as, is having a reserve component in all state allocations going forward. So we've got pretty early notice of that. We've got some time to do some things to start. We'll start our budget process a little bit earlier this year in terms of our principles and our priorities, and, and then manage our way through that this year. You know, there'll be more to follow on that, but I just wanted to let the board know. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Rick, did they, in the letter from the governor's office, did they happen to mention why? Is, I mean, are they concerned about tax receipts, or?
Was there a rationale? I don't remember a lot of information. Chris, you want to answer that?
Dr. McLennan and trustees, there was a comment about just concern about the overall economic impact, and the estimated tax revenues at this time, they had not come in at the time that the memo was produced.
It was, it came out a day after the, the news on the inversion of the treasury rate, and the beginning talk about recession, so I'm not sure if it was connected with that, but being very conservative.
Okay. Thank you. Board, any questions for Dr. McLennan?
No.
All right, thank you. Next thing would be just a quick synopsis from trustee Dunlap on Meyer Health and Science Building expansion update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prior to this meeting, we had a workshop relating to capital projects, or future capital projects. And myself and trustee Murray sit on a committee related to the expansion of the Meyer Health Science Building. And so, if I miss something, please jump in and, and help me out there. Several years ago, Christie Doyle, Dean for Nursing and Health Programs, submitted a federal grant and received a multimillion-dollar grant to expand the health-related programs, not only here at NIC, but throughout the state of Idaho. Because of that, there were eight new programs that were designated to be established here at NIC. And over a period of time, interest in health-related programs has grown considerably. And to that extent, the Meyer Health Science Building has exceeded its capacity. And so, the board has been looking at opportunities to expand Meyer Health Science related to those new programs, and to provide new opportunities for students. And so, this afternoon, the architects gave us a briefing on what this new facility could look like based on the programmatic needs. And what it would mean to the college would be an addition of five new labs that would bring us to a total of 12 labs. And those new labs include A and P, Anatomy and Physiology Labs, Biology Lab, Medical Technician Lab, Bio-Human Lab, and a relocation of our cadaver lab. In addition, we would go from six classrooms to 10 classrooms. We would add three student services offices. We would add 10 new faculty offices. We would add adjunct faculty office space, and we would provide breakout spaces, five group study slash breakout areas, a conference room, and some space for a student lounge. And that would be a 24,000-square-foot expansion to Meyer Health Sciences. And the estimated cost for construction, based on current construction costs, was approximately $8 million. And so, this was just a preliminary design look at what could happen. The board will need to have some future workshops to discuss the cost implications, and whether or not we can afford that, or whether the pre-design needs to be modified. Brad, did I have any?
Yep.
Thank you, trustee Dunlap. Appreciate that. All right, that takes us on to our, we didn't have any old business, we're going to go onto new business, and we're going to discuss our NIC athletic program, just for an informational item. We have a couple of bullet points. We're going to first discuss, trustee Howard's going to make an opening statement, and then we're going to discuss the, how we got into the NWECC, and then what happened once we were in the NWECC, and then where we are now, and update on our procedures with the Booster Club. We tried to bullet it out so that we could have a real, real good information. So trustee Howard, did you want to start off with a statement?
Right, and maybe you might mention when the public comment is going to?
Yeah, public comment will come right after that.
I guess I wanted to make a couple of comments only about kind of how we got here. And, and to quite frankly tell all you who are here to comment on this and to listen, is that we want to hear from you. We need to hear from you. I sit here at these meetings every month, and it's, normally, we don't have much participation from the public, and so this is very valuable to the board, to have public members come in here and express their ideas and thoughts about issues that are important to them. So thank you for coming here. We got into this situation, I suspect you'd call it, several years ago. It was brought about by a number of factors. We had been on a multi-year, double-digit increase in, in student enrollment.
Decrease.
Increase at first, yeah. And then it started to decrease. And when it decreased, our, our revenues decreased. And as, there's already a suggestion here, over the years, our, our budget is dependent upon three basic income sources: state money, tuition, and student, and taxes. Over the years, and some years ago, we had approximately 40%, 45% that came from the state. But the state has regularly been decreasing their percentage of the amount of money that they provide us, which we have to make up with tuition and with taxes. And so, every year, as we look at our budget, it's a matter of, how do we make sure that we live up to our obligation to the students in this community? Because that's our fundamental role, our fundamental mission, is to provide education for a wide range of students. Education is our primary role, but clearly, athletics is an important component of that. There's no doubt about it, in my mind, for me. Athletics provides another form of education. It's a form of education that teaches a lot of character, teaches a lot of elements of good character. It puts them to test in the laboratory of the playing field, and allows the students in order to learn how to love, live, and make decisions under pressure. There's a lot of important aspects of athletics. But there are also a lot of other obligations that we as a college have. We have the career technical courses that we have to provide for, and they are very, very expensive. We have obviously the academic courses, we have work, workforce training. There are a lot of aspects besides athletics. So as we got into this decrease in enrollment, and a decrease in funding, it was a matter of, where do we come up with the money? Do we have to, if we stayed in our, in the NJCAA, which we weren't at the time, we would, we would be forced to probably reduce the number of athletic programs that we be forced to probably reduce the number of athletic programs that we had. Should we get rid of soccer? Do we need to get rid of softball? How are we going to meet the needs? Because some of the programs that we were in were not sustainable on the long term. Travel expenses, scholarships. The estimate was that by moving to the NJCAA, we would have a savings of probably somewhere in the area of $650,000 a year. So it really was a decision of how do we make sure that we treat, we help as many students as possible participate in athletics on our campus? And the suggestion was made by Al Williams that we move to the NJCAA. And Al did that because he wanted to help us address the problem and save as many sports as we possibly could. He made that suggestion for all the good reasons, and he did an analysis and presented it to the board. And it was a, not an easy vote. It was a 3-2 vote. There were some different trustees on the board at the time. Christie was here, I was here, Todd was here, Joe was president. But they voted against it, moving, and I voted for it along with Judy Meyer and Ron Nielsen. It was a difficult decision, but it was one that was based upon how best do we treat the greatest number of students who put their trust in us here at NIC, and to serve the community in terms of providing educational opportunities. So I guess I wanted to give you that background so that as we proceed with our discussions here tonight, and I know that the people who are here tonight have a very significant interest in the athletic programs, but there is a larger, larger idea that we have to deal with as trustees and as administrators in terms of carrying on our mission to this community.
Thank you. Ken, trustee Dunlap, you wanted to speak on the issue?
Sure. As Ken mentioned, I was president from 2012 to 2016 during the time this decision was made to switch conferences. I'm going to provide you a little more specific information, and that information comes from the agenda and documents related to the February 26, 2014 board meeting where this was discussed, as well as the minutes from that board meeting. As Ken mentioned, we had a significant decline in enrollment. The first year, we had a 10%, excuse me, an 11% decline in enrollment, and it was expected that in 2015, we would have an additional 10% decline in enrollment. Now, that translated to over $2 million that the college needed to come up with. We could either increase tuition, we could increase your taxes, which I'm sure you would not appreciate, or we could go through a budget-cutting process, and that's exactly what we decided to do. And every area on campus was expected to participate, including the president's office. And to set an example, I cut $100,000 from the president's budget. It was mentioned that Al estimated that there would be $120,000 savings in travel costs and approximately $500,000 in savings with the grant and aid differential between the SNC West Athletic Conference and what was allowed in the NWHAC. The rationale that was given to me by Al in terms of why we needed to switch leagues had several components. One was that we either needed, he needed to either eliminate programs because the budget wasn't there, or we could switch to another league. In addition, when you look at student athletes, they are students first. And there were times, softball in particular, that they would be on the road for 10 days. And you can't take a student out of the classroom for 10 days and expect them to achieve what they should as a student. Al also mentioned that there would be, this would create a greater rivalry with closer teams such as Community Colleges Spokane, Wenatchee, Yakima, and the other teams that were in the eastern region of the NWHAC, and therefore would create greater attendance. It also posed a safety issue when we traveled while we were in the SWAC. By comparison, the closest team to us in the SWAC was 585 miles away, a nine-hour drive. And in the middle of winter, that's a pretty treacherous drive down to Twin Falls. The furthest team away was 1,110 miles away. By comparison, the teams in the eastern region, which we belong to in the NWHAC, the furthest team was 229 miles away. Huge difference in travel issues and costs. The proposal was put to the board. That was presented by Al and myself at the February board meeting in 2014. The proposal to switch leagues was supported by the college senate, the Association of Students at NIC, the college's 11 division chairs, former president Bob Bennett, and the results of an informal online poll. And so, as trustee Howard mentioned, the vote was taken. There were three trustees that were in favor of the move, one that was opposed to the move, and one that abstained from the vote. And so we had until 2016 to migrate all of our teams over to the NWHAC, and that's exactly what happened. And that concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Dunlap. That takes us on to the Northwest Athletic Conference investigation that you all have read about, heard about. We want to provide you with further information on that. President McLennan?
Thank you, Chair Wood. I've been asked to lay out the college's response to the NWHAC investigation report and the outcome of the report, share our rationale for the strategy pursued, and to report on our progress of addressing the violations. So to recap on the, kind of what, how we got here, we received, or I'm sorry, the NWHAC received an anonymous complaint filed against North Idaho College for violations primarily related to our basketball program, at least that's the way the complaints were stated, in terms of housing support for students, food support for students, and the way we operated our camps. And there was a linkage in each of those to the operation or the college's use of the NIC Booster Club. We responded to that complaint in writing, and in that response, we showed the steps that we had previously taken, or steps that were in progress to be in compliance. We acknowledged the housing issue as problematic and that it had already been corrected. The NWHAC did not accept that response. We were notified in March that they would be launching an investigation, which they did. That investigation took place in early April over a three-day period of time. As a result of that investigation, NIC received a report of findings and sanctions on June 3rd, and we had 30 days to decide and/or to submit an appeal, which we did on July On August 8th, I met along with Vice President Stanley with the NWHAC Executive Committee for two hours to verbally augment our appeal. We received the final findings on August 13th, which largely maintained the sanctions we had already received. And it's important to note that throughout this entire process, from the beginning to the end, and even continuing today, NIC has remained open, responsive, transparent, and cooperative with the NWHAC, our internal community of faculty and staff, with the local media, and our community at large. The strategy that we, so as we received these, the findings of the investigation report, and started thinking about how we would respond to that, and we obviously saw the bias in the report, it would appear to us to be an abusive process by the investigating team, questioned if it was truly intended to force us out of the conference. Despite clear and documented bias and extremely heavy-handed sanctions, we created the appeal with the intent to create a positive, or at least manageable, future that would provide North Idaho College athletes continued access to intercollegiate competition. So the approach we took in that appeal, and there are copies, I believe, on the back table for you to see if you haven't already had a chance to look at that, was to acknowledge and document the bias demonstrated by the investigating team, redirect or elevate culpability away from a single sport, in this case, basketball, and away from our student athletes, and to appropriately place responsibility at the administrative level. To accept responsibility for the valid compliance issues that had been raised, and to demonstrate actions taken, both those taken prior to the investigation, which there were many, and those taken since. And to communicate our intent to continue being responsive, transparent, and cooperative, and most importantly, to request the removal of all sanctions specifically directed at the men's basketball program and its impact on the students. So just a few comments on what I've learned, or what I, we learned during the course of all this. Since entering the conference, we collectively haven't always been the best colleagues. We had problems with respect to administrative oversight of complying with conference rules and procedures. That our athletic department as a unit was divided, and in many ways engaged in significant conflict, and had been for some time. Challenges stemming from administrative oversight and department conflict were at least partially responsible for our uneven, or our inability to comply with NWHAC rules. At the August 8th appeal meeting with the NWHAC Executive Committee, we reiterated what was stated in the appeal, specifically our concerns about bias and the administrative versus basketball responsibility. We provided more detail regarding NIC's activities on addressing athletic issues prior to this complaint. And of note, we acknowledged the challenges that we had with our wrestling program and the academic policy issues that came out of that, and the college's management of that issue. We discussed that my office had commissioned a Title IX review to make sure, ensure that the college was in compliance with Title IX policies and laws. We had already revised and developed new procedures for our camp programs and the oversight of those programs. And I think most importantly, prior to any of this, we had, for very good reason, reorganized our athletic department and the leadership of that department to fall under the Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Grayton Stanley. And we also noted that with the exception of the lease payments on the vacant apartments over the summer period, which we acknowledged, both the, both the NWHAC investigation and our internal review found nothing specific or unique to the basketball, to the men's basketball team. With respect to administrative oversight, we noted our intent to create a department-wide and leadership performance accountability plan to reinforce our expectations that all coaches have and understand, and that they have compliance responsibility. Reasserted our genuine, our desire to have a genuine relationship with NWHAC leadership to help correct our course through probation, monitoring, and active participation and elevation of our progress, and the evaluation of our progress, and mentoring the leadership in our athletic department. And my unequivocal expectation that we complete fairly and act honorably. Also requested that because of the limited specific finding regarding the basketball program, that they remove all sanctions specific to that sport and have sanctions be as far away from student impact, student athlete impact as possible. And requested because the majority of the issues were addressed prior to the complaint and the investigation, that the monetary fine be reversed or significantly reduced. Some observations of that NWHAC Executive Committee, they didn't acknowledge our claim of bias. They displayed, communicated a high degree of frustration with NIC's lack of compliance and oversight for compliance. They placed a very high value on the housing issue as a recruiting advantage. But, and I do want to emphasize this, there was no indication that they wanted North Idaho College out of the conference. I asked direct questions both in that meeting with all executive committee members present, and I asked it of the league executive director prior to setting pen to paper to write our appeal. The outcome of all this, the sanctions were largely upheld. I think we'll see some movement on those a little bit in the future. In all of this, our principal goal, my principal goal, has been to provide continued access to intercollegiate athletics, to the intercollegiate athletic experience for our students and community, not too dissimilar at all from the reason and the rationale for moving into the NWHAC in the first place. To comply with all conference rules and to work to improve our relationship with NWHAC to achieve that principal goal. I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Stanley to discuss how we've addressed the three charges that I mentioned at the beginning of my comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Wood, other trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests. The president has done a great job going through and explaining most of the details of the sanctions and the complaint. I know members of our public and our community have had access to those as well. The first one you would note was associated with the provision of housing during the summer. It was those couple months that there were funds that came from the Booster Club that were used to reserve the housing during the summer. There was no note that we had athletes staying in that housing, but just that they were reserved. The conference held that that was an unfair advantage for us, that that housing was held in reserve for basketball players to come to in the fall when they returned to school. We immediately, upon notice of that, we immediately made changes to that. Those were not Booster Club funds that were actually used. In fact, it was funds that were provided by students, that were collected by the coaches, that were held in an off-campus bank account, and then used to reserve the housing during the summer. So I want to be clear about the Booster Club was not providing the funds directly. Instead, it was just funds that came back through a private off-campus bank account that students provided those funds. The second allegation had to do with meals and entertainment. The finding of that was that there was no evidence of violation related to providing meals or entertainment for athletic teams that was against the code. But that did note some concern about our Booster Club operations. I want to be clear, and I think the president has spoken to this as well, there's no fault with the Booster Club and any of their operations. In fact, this college has been very fortunate to have a Booster Club that's been so supportive of our athletic programs over the years and continues to be as well. In fact, the problem was, was the relationship that the Booster Club had In fact, the problem was, was the relationship that the Booster Club had, the relationship that the college had with the Booster Club and the way funds were processed, and I want to address that in just a moment. The third sanction had to do with summer camps, and the President alluded to the fact that we had already changed that. One of the provisions of the code said that the camps had to be run through the college business office. The way that we had been doing that is camp proceeds had been going to the Booster Club, camp expenses had been paid out of the Booster Club, code just said that needed to all run through the business office, and prior to this allegation, we had already changed last fall that provision, and we've been following that since, that all proceeds come to the business office, all expenses associated are paid out of institutional funds from that same account. I do want to go back and talk about just the Booster Club change, with the Booster Club, the way funds were operated, so the Booster Club and members of college staff here were responsible for working with supporters of the college to get Booster Club memberships, to have sponsorships of our programs. Those funds were held in Booster Club accounts off-campus, those funds were also expended through Booster Club processes. We have gone to a model which complies with N-WAC code, where Booster Club funds are still held, much like our NIC Foundation are still held in that 501(c)(3) status, NIC Booster Club. But expenditures now, just like we do with the Foundation, are processed through the college business office. And so we know the Booster Club, for example, this year, has allocated to each one of the programs $6,000 on the front side of that. That is, that is held in reserve on the college's side, programs can spend from that account, the college has the liability for it, will go back to the Booster Club and ask for reimbursement of those expenses. So the major difference is that funds are still held in the NIC Booster Club account, but all expenditures go through the college spending process similar to every department, every other entity here on campus, and then we ask for reimbursement on a quarterly basis. We've just reviewed that process and are ready to move that forward. I want to offer my thanks to the NIC Booster Club Executive Committee who's worked alongside us through those processes to make that possible, and we're aware of the changes that we were making. So that essentially addresses those areas, the camps were covered, the Booster Club process of funds associated with the institution was covered, and then we stopped the process relative to paying for housing during the summer. So we've addressed all three of those, and we'll be reporting that back to the Executive Board of the N-WAC by their provision in 2021. I suspect we're going to have an opportunity to review that much sooner than that date that was in the original sanctions.
All right. Thank you, Grayden. At this time, we are going to begin our public comment. When you signed up on the sheet, it says two minutes, but we're going to ask you to keep it to three minutes, and if you start to wander into four or five minutes, we are going to stop you because we want to make sure everyone gets to be heard. I want to remind you that this is not a question-and-answer period for the board, this is a business meeting by the board held in public, not a public meeting. But if you do have questions of the board that you would like to forward to us, we will take those questions. You need to forward them through to the President's office, and they will be disseminated to the board. Let's see. I want to also remind you that we are restricted by state law to discuss personnel. Doesn't mean that you won't be able to discuss personnel, but certainly we won't be doing that. I can assure you that this board values our employees. Many of us, because we're a small town, we're personal friends with some of our employees. So I want, I want you to know that as much as you care about our employees, we do too. And this has been a very difficult time for everyone. I also want to, I think it's very important to reiterate that you've heard, you've seen the public statements from the board, that the President and the administration has the full support of the board, and that is correct, that they have the full support of the board. And we're attempting to move forward and do the right thing, and I hope you've gained some knowledge on that tonight. So we're going to bring forward the first person under public comment, and that is John Butler. John, please come forward.
Appreciate your explanations and your attempt to kind of diffuse what's been going on. For me, I'm here tonight, it's about leadership. I'm going to change this up a little bit, I have a whole bunch of things written up, but after you guys have talked and stuff, it makes me think about leadership, responsibility, doing the right thing. You know, when I first heard about the N-WAC sanctions and the possible dismissal of Al Williams and Corey Simmons, I thought, this must be a joke. And then as it went on, I was outraged, I could not believe it. I asked myself, how could leadership at NIC not stand up for these two fine individuals? And I realize it's not only about just them, but at the time, that's what it was. Not only the individuals, but the students and the college itself. Two people that were, I mean, just credible citizens or ambassadors to this town and city for a long time, it just doesn't seem like they were treated correctly. Their reputations have been tarnished for alleged violations with no real substance. I find it appalling, I personally find it appalling, that Corey Simmons was suspended for 10 games without pay. I don't know if people know that, but when I heard that, I was just, I could not believe it. For a guy that's been here and done what he's done for this college, and basketball, and the reputation, for somebody not to stand up and take, and be accountable for our people here, I think that leadership believed, I believe leadership believed, as time goes by, it would be forgotten. It won't. And I'll tell you, I've had three weeks to know that we were going to come up here and speak, and I thought, you know, in that time period, there's a lot of things I could be doing, but the more I thought about it, it's just, this isn't right, and things need to be corrected. By accepting the N-WAC sanctions, it gives a perception that we have done something wrong. You know, we're a strong, proud community that doesn't run and hide from things. We're a can-do community. When we've had to raise money, we've raised money for every project in this town. So I know you talk about expenses and stuff, but there are ways to do things if you want to, if you want to get it done. I don't, I don't think it's too late for leadership to take responsibility and stand up and say, hey, we made a mistake. We're not going to abide by N-WAC sanctions, we're not going to pay the fines, we're not giving back our championships. The student athletes worked hard for these championships. What kind of message are we sending them by accepting sanctions that are ludicrous and Our leadership needs, our leadership needs to be loyal to NIC first, not the N-WAC, who clearly, if you can't see it, they do not want us in that league. They want us out of here. You know, leadership, responsibility, I think you just, Chris, you mentioned it, do the right thing. You guys need to do the right thing. If you made a mistake, stand up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Charlie Nipp.
Good evening, trustees, thank you. My name is Charlie Nipp. I'm a resident of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County. I've been raised in this area and been very fortunate to be a part of it for many, many years. I appreciate the opportunity to address the trustees. Many of us in this room travel outside the area on a regular basis, and when we go, and you're asked where you're from, and you say Coeur d'Alene, or you say North Idaho, all of you have experienced the reaction of wow from the people asking the question. And they usually say, what a special place, you're fortunate to live there. Then it's usually followed up, in my case, with why has the region been so successful? It seems to thrive, the people are great, why it has been able to become what it is? My answer is usually to take a moment and describe the outstanding leadership we've enjoyed at many levels for many years throughout our region that North Idaho College serves. Our mayors in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, our city councils, Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls school districts, our many nonprofits, North Idaho College, and engaged citizens at all levels of the community have been able to lead based on great vision, common community values, established traditions of excellence, and the ability to lead in difficult, difficult circumstances and times. Most of us, most of what we all have here has not been easy. Many of us have sat in chairs like you're sitting in this evening. But when tested, we're able to base decisions on those community values and shared vision. What is troubling many, many citizens today is the apparent lack of leadership here at North Idaho College to defend our values, our traditions, and turn support for our student body, our student athletes, and staff at all levels from the N-WAC allegations. If the allegations that you have published are correct, then we should be extending all of the resources we can engage in to defend the many, many years of academic and athletic excellence here at this outstanding institutions, institution. Not sure what your strategy has been to date, but it has been harmful to the student body, the student athletes, the staff, and the entire community. North Idaho College has been a great source of pride for our region for many, many years. You are an important piece of the fabric of what makes this region really good. Not sure you understand how damaging this is for our region. It is not too late to say no to these sanctions, and for you to rely on our longstanding community values and vision and the support of your community. We'll stand with you, and we'll support your leadership, even if it's difficult. Thank you for your service, we appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Next is Paul Berger.
Thank you. My name is Paul Berger. I've been a resident here, time flies when you get to be my age, actually, and I've been a resident here for now 23 years. Love the town, love the college, love a lot of things about it, love the sports programs you have, we have. I'm trying to, you know, say to myself, why and how does this, something like this happen? It's just beyond my wild dreams. There's a book called The Death of Common Sense, which was one of my favorite books, I read it 25 years ago, I've reread it probably five, 10 times. And in it, there is a quote from former Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court Justice William Brennan, and I'll quote him, he says, "The characteristic complaint of our time seems not to be that government provides no reasons, but that its reasons often remote, often seem remote from human beings who must live with the consequences." I think that's happened here, frankly. It's that, he goes on to say that government acts like some extraterrestrial power, not an institution that exists to serve us. Interestingly now, it concludes its actions have an arbitrary quality, it almost never deals with real-life problems in a way that reflects an understanding of the situation. And I, when I look at what we've got here, it looks to me like, this is a classic example, a textbook example of death, of the death of common sense, we're just not applying common sense to this whole procedure. To me, frankly, and I, it's not easy to say, but I believe this is an abject failure of governance and leadership. I think we failed in our responsibilities and have not only fumbled the ball, we've given the ball to the other team. In the same process, we have severely hurt members of our community, members of the college, and the college itself, I believe, and to some extent, the community at large. As President McLennan has said in his letter to the, to the Coeur d'Alene press, and I want to, if anybody is here from the press, I want to thank them for the coverage of this issue. But as President McLennan said in his letter to the Coeur d'Alene press, the penalties were, and said it again tonight, President, and I agree with you, the penalties were unquestionably excessive, incredibly disproportionate to any violation. Yet that being said, the unbelievable, to me, unbelievable response from the, from the President and the board was to roll over and play dead. That's the best way I could say it. It's just, we got to fight. I mean, yes, the coward of the county, we got to fight to be a man, or a woman for that matter. So my conclusion is, how could this happen? My only conclusion is that when I look at it, it's been really a monumental failure of leadership. I would ask you to reconsider this, think hard, long and hard about it, it's hurting everybody in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next is John Stone.
Thank you for allowing us to input to you tonight. I know it's hard to sit there. I'm very angry about this because I see a really quality person being crucified in public, and he doesn't deserve it. He's 17 years of service here, quality service to the school, to the community, loved by the community, and then to be cast off and pushed away, given six months severance and thrown to the curb, it's not the right answer. I was involved with Gonzaga University when they were just about bankrupt, and we got the athletic program going, and you know the rest of the story. I've been around athletics and on athletic committees, and involved in Gonzaga's Athletic Committee for 10 years, and raised a lot of money in this area. Coeur d'Alene isn't the same town it was 10 years ago, or even five years ago. There's a lot of money here. I've raised $16 million in the last four or five years for a business, and I know there's a lot of money here. And so I would propose something today, tonight, to you that you might want to look at, there's another option. Here's what I'm proposing. Al will be put on sabbatical leave for one year. NIC has already funded six months under the current separation. During that year, Al would coordinate with the SWAC to set up a new and hopefully more efficient travel arrangement, and schedule for athletic events while maintaining cost effectiveness. Number two, Al would spend six weeks, or whatever time is necessary, at the University of Oregon, which I did, they've got a wonderful athletic training program for development, and for not only raising funds, but constructing facilities. Al would, number three, would scan the United States for the very best two-year athletic program, and try to identify the most successful program, how they are funded, and how do they engage the community with NIC. That's what I think Coeur d'Alene wants here. Number four, an athletic development committee will commence raising a million dollars to fund the North Idaho College to enhance a successful tradition at North Idaho College. And number five, Al would help form the above athletic committee that oversees the fundraising for the community, or athletic development, and scholarships. This group would meet four times a year. This athletic development board would focus on branding North Idaho College as a premier two-year athletic program. This committee should enhance the long-term and successful tradition of North Idaho College. And lastly, Al stays on as Athletic Director at NIC until his retirement or potentially transitions into another area of the school. So that's what my proposal would be, to look on the bright side, and look at the opportunity, and not just cut, 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 and treat people like they've been treated. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rolly Williams.
I was a little hesitant about coming down this evening, but I thought I'd be able to clarify a few things that you've been dealing with, and some of the items that I've heard about in the press and the things that are taking place. I think first of all, you have to recognize that the league, N-WAC, does not want us in the N-WAC. They don't want us in there now, and historically, they have not wanted us there. We have no friends in the N-WAC. I was surprised when this all started to come about in the newspaper, that I thought, well, we'll hear somebody stand up and talk- well, we'll hear somebody stand up and talk about the absurd things and sanctions that they've suggested to North Idaho College. I thought one of the other schools would say, hey, this is not right, you know? This is our member, and we're going to stand up for him. But you didn't hear anything. We don't belong in the N WAC. We're a national junior college program. And as I was listening to you earlier about the costs of various things, there are various ways to raise money and do different things. When I left as the regional treasurer for Region 18, we had $70,000 in the treasury for men's basketball account. We paid the full expenses of our basketball team to go to the Nationals. That's what's possible when you talk about national competition. I happen to think in terms of national competition as being the best you can be. You don't strive for mediocrity. That's what happens here right now. Let's go out, and we'll be the champion of the N WAC. What the hell does that mean? You know, if you've got an undefeated team, you win the N WAC, and you're sitting there thinking, I wonder what we could do if we had a chance to go on and be the best you can possibly be. Well, the obvious to me is, you just have to recognize, we have no friends in this league. There's nobody there that wants us in the league to start with. I don't believe they thought we would take this fine and sanctions. I don't think the league thought we would take it. All right? I thought they felt that we would say, the hell with it, and we're going to go another way, the only logical way to go nationally. I've talked about mediocrity, which this allows, which has not been a hallmark of North Idaho College, by the way. It's something that we've always been looking for the best. You don't take your best and say, you can't go on and see where you could compete against other people. I see my time is up, but as a final note, I would suggest you folks that your treatment of Al Williams leaves a lot to be desired.
Thank you, Rolly. Rob Robinson.
Chairman Wood and fellow Board of Trustees members, I'm here to say that I too am upset by what has happened here. We're here to talk about the N WAC, but I'm also here because for, I've been a member of the Booster Club for 43 years, and I represented N I C wrestling, N I C wrestling coaches, N I C wrestling camps, N I C wrestling families, and their wrestlers for 40 years. I'm retired now, and so I can't practice law anymore, but I can assure you, had I still had my license, I would have jumped in what happened to our two wrestling coaches here this winter. But let me speak to N WAC first, because I don't have a lot of time. Personally, as a longtime board member, I mean, as a longtime Booster Club member, I felt that what happened here was predictable. We had a number of Booster Club members that were opposed to joining the N WAC, and when President Dunlap and A.D., Al Williams, were all friends, we all know each other, proposed to go to the N WAC, there was very well-meaning, they had good bases, they had done a lot of research, and we had meetings just like you're having tonight, and not one, I think we had a couple. But it went to the N WAC three to two, and I felt it was predictable, because what happens when you go to the N WAC is they have much more strict and tight rules. And for whatever reason, our basketball program ran afoul of those more stricter rules. And why? I don't know, but it did. And the bottom line is, to me, it was predictable. And so I think we need to get out of the N WAC personally, if we can find a way to finance, like Rolly was talking about, like John's talked about, and get back into the SWAC, I think they'll take us, and the N J C two-way. Now, wrestling quickly, because I got to be quick. President McLennan used some words that I felt applies, heavy-handed. The way they treated Pat Whitcomb and Kerry Stanley was heavy-handed, in my opinion. I don't think they were fairly and honorably treated, to use President McLennan's words. I felt that the penalties given them were incredibly excessive. 22 years, and two-time national champ, and has done a ton for our community, Pat Whitcomb, Kerry Stanley, longtime national champion, he was treated unfairly. No doubt about it. In my opinion, to use the president's words again, incredibly excessive. So I don't, I didn't feel as fair, I don't feel as honorable, and right now, the same thing is happening with one of our wrestling coaches. And I think it's way excessive. The same business that they've been giving to Al, to Cor, not Corey, but to Pat, to Kerry, and now one of our soccer coaches. It's not the way to treat people that have been in this community for a long time and have contributed to our community and to our college. Academics most important, but athletics has brought a ton to our community. So I just want to thank you. I'm over my time. I appreciate all the hard work that you all do, but hopefully, you'll reconsider some of these. Wrestling, our coaches are gone, we have a new wrestling coach, he's doing a great job. But basketball, hopefully, we can keep it, keep her going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. And the final public comment, Lou Chandler?
No, Lou? Okay. Well, that concludes our public comment, and we thank you for sticking around for this entire meeting, coming and telling us in very clear terms what your thoughts are. That's important, and we know it's been troubling. It's troubling for everyone involved. And I would imagine, at some point in the future, we will have the discussion on conferences that could very possibly be a board agenda item, then we have that discussion about whether we stay in the N WAC or we move to the SWAC. I can tell you, certainly for this year, there's no time for anything like that, and what the board has said very publicly is, we want to get our credibility back, we want to follow the rules, we want to model the right behavior for our students, we want to make good on what we've been charged with. And so, we're focused on that. We're complying. We're doing everything we can to do the right thing. I won't talk about the personnel issues, but certainly welcome all of your feedback tonight, and thank you very much for coming. We're just about to the end of the meeting. Really, all we have left is board chair report, and all I have to tell the trustees real quick is, we did have the ACCC meeting just last few weeks ago, and I forwarded you all those notes, and it looks like we will need to meet as a group probably in December, so we'll kick around some dates and get that all out to you. And that concludes my report. Any remarks for the good of the order?
No.
With that, we will adjourn.